It appears somewhere. It's in your package. Congress will now come back from its recess this morning. Chief Kirk, next item.
Mrs. Speaker, item 14, standing committee reports, there are none.
Next item.
Item 15, special committee report. We have a special committee report number 21-02 by Chairman Wally, Committee to Wait on the President.
Chairman Wally, you have to go.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I move for adoption of the said report.
It's moved and seconded that Congress adopt Special Committee Report Number 21-02 by the Committee to Wait on the President. Discussion. Chairman Wally.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. The four members of Congress that you appointed to meet with the President met with him and his cabinet this morning. Before that, I want to thank our legal staff for outstanding report regarding the visit. The meeting was quite brief, and there were some items that were raised by the President, including JCRP meeting tomorrow with him, and members are invited to meet with them at 8:30 tomorrow morning, and also members are invited for lunch with the JCRP and His There is two nominations that are forthcoming. Are the Board of Richen that nominees Susan Collin, and one for Dellicom Board, Norlin Oliver. And regarding the inauguration, President will be submitting a supplemental that will include the $400,000 for the inauguration, and person in charge will be Mr. Churchill, and Lynn from our Congress will be joining with him. The revised budget is 8.6 million, and the supplemental is 2.5. Some of the items that were discussed are in the report itself, and members can peruse through it. And I will ask other members of the Committee to Wait on the President to supplement what I just finished here, if they can. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Wally. Any other comments or additions to that by the committee members? Floor, you have any procedure to do?
Speaker, I have no comment on the report. I simply want to just make sure that we're not violating any of our rules. I hereby move to suspend any relevant rule that may impede our action on the report.
It's moved and seconded that any relevant rule that might impede our action on this special report be suspended at this point. Those in favor say yes. Vows no. Motion carried. Relevant rules are suspended. Continue discussion on the motion on the report. Any further discussion by members of the committee?
Speaker.
Chairman Berman?
Yeah, thank you. Just point of clarification. I know the President is asking for $400,000 for the inauguration, not knowing that there's already $100,000 appropriated for that. So, is that, if I'm not mistaken, how I received it from His Excellency, that they need $400,000 for the inauguration. Am I correct, Chairman? All right. Just wanted to point that out, because I know we have $100,000 sitting for that already. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Berman, for the clarification. Any other from the other members? If none, there is no objection. Discussion is closed. So let's vote. Those in favor of the adoption of Special Committee Report Number 21-02 say yes. Vows no. Motion carried. Special Committee Report Number 21-02 is adopted by Congress. Next report.
There are none, Mrs. Speaker.
Next item.
Mrs. Speaker, next item is item 16, that's the Assembly on Measures and Communications. We have a referral sheet number 21-04.
Okay. Chairman and members of the committees, take a look at that for your lighting purposes. Next item.
Unfinished business, there are none, Mrs. Speaker. Item 7.
Okay, next item.
Item 18, bill calendar, none, Mrs. Speaker.
Chairman Figueroa, take us down to resolution calendar.
Yes.
Okay. There is no objection. We will now go down to item 19, resolution calendar. Chairman Figueroa.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that we go down to item 19, and that is the resolution calendar.
There is no objection. We will be, we're now on the item 19. Shortly, subject to call of the chair. 17 or 06?
Well, this is what I have. 21-06 is the ceiling resolution.
Staff, can you verify that? Let's see. I have 17. Yes, of course. Work with Chairman Figueroa. Find out what happened.
He needs pair of glasses.
He already has one on. He need a magnifying. Find a copy of the 17 to give it to Chairman. Staff, got it? Okay. Congress is back in session. Can you please restate your motion?
Yeah, thank you, Mrs. Speaker. To restate my motion, I move that Congress adopt Congress Resolution Number 21-17.
It's moved and seconded that Resolution Number 21-17 be withdrawn, I mean be placed on the resolution calendar for action. Floor Leader.
Speaker, move to suspend any relevant rule that may impede our action on this resolution.
It's moved and seconded that any relevant rule that might impede our action on the motion be suspended. Those in favor say yes. Vows no. Motion carried. Relevant rules are suspended at this point. Let's vote. Those in favor of the adoption of that motion, do we do place Resolution Number 21-17, say yes. Vows no. Motion carried. Resolution Number 21-17 is now placed on the resolution calendar for action. Chairman Figueroa.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's moved and seconded that Resolution Number 21-17 be adopted by Congress. Read the title, Chief Kirk.
Mrs. Speaker, I request a resolution number 21-17. It's a resolution setting the ceiling of the total funds estimated to be available for appropriation from the General Fund of the Federated States of Micronesia for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2019.
There is no other discussion. Any discussion? Questions being called for. If there is no objection, discussion is closed. So let's vote. Those in favor of the adoption of Resolution Number 21-17, say yes. Vows no. Motion carried. Resolution Number 21-17 is adopted by Congress. Next resolution. Speaker, short reses. When we go back. Congress is back in session. We're still on the resolution calendar.
But I move that we go back to item 18, that is the bill calendar.
Any second. It's moved and seconded that we go back to the bill calendar. There is no objection, so be it. We're now back on the bill calendar. Okay. Chairman Figueroa.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I move to withdraw Congress Bill Number 21-05 and Congress Bill Number 21-07.
Congress is back in session. There was a motion. Can you just restate it for clarification?
Yes, Speaker, thank you very much. And I move that Congress, that I withdraw Congress Bill Number 21-05 and 21-07 be withdrawn from your Committee on Ways and Means and placed on the bill calendar for action.
It's moved and seconded that CP Number 21-05 and 21-07 be withdrawn from committee and placed on the bill calendar for action. The relevant rules are still suspended up to this point. So, let's vote. Those in favor of adoption of that motion, say yes. Vows no. Motion carried. CP Number 21-05 and 21-07 are now withdrawn from committee and placed on the bill calendar for first reading action. Okay, first bill, Chief Kirk.
Mrs. Speaker, we have CP Number 21-05 for first reading. CP Number 21-05, it's a bill for an act to further amend sections 1, 2, 8, and 9 of Public Law Number 20-131, as amended by Public Laws Numbers 20-154, 20-159, 20-172, and 20-187, in order to appropriate $1,880,358 of additional funds from the General Fund of the Federated States of Micronesia for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2019, to provide additional funding for the operations of the national government of the Federated States of Micronesia, various grants, subsidies, and contributions, and for other purposes.
Okay, Chairman Figueroa.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I move for the passage of the third bill on first reading.
It's moved and seconded that Congress pass on first reading CP Number 21-05. Discussion. Chairman Figueroa.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I have a proposed floor amendment. It's been written and distributed. May I ask that it be not read, but inserted into the record for the, to reflect amendment to the third bill?
Okay, there is an offer for amendment to CP 21-05 by Chairman Figueroa, and because of its length, we will dispense with its reading into the record, but it's been written up, distributed to members and our general clerk. So, make a motion for adoption.
So move.
It's moved and seconded that the offer for amendment to CP 21-05 offered by Chairman Figueroa be adopted. The relevant rules are still suspended up to this point. So, discussion on the offered amendments. Any discussion?
Reses, please.
Short reses, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. We're still discussing the offered floor amendment by Chairman Figueroa. Any further discussion? If none, if there is no objection, discussion is closed. Let's vote. Those in favor of the adoption of the offered floor amendments to CP Number 21-05 offered by Chairman Figueroa, say yes. Vows no. Motion carried. The offered for amendments are adopted. Next, I mean discussion, continue discussion on CD1. Questions being called for. If there is no objection, discussion is closed. So let's vote. Piral call of members. Chief Kirk.
Senator Aretas. Senator Figueroa. Senator Colent. Floor Leader Harper. Senator Kohnan. Vice Speaker Moses. Senator Neath. Senator Berman. Senator Romolo. Senator Orsman. Senator Orsman. Senator Wally. Speaker Semina.
Yes.
Mrs. Speaker, 11 members voted for.
For that reason, CP Number 21-05, CD1, has passed Congress on first reading. Next bill.
Mrs. Speaker, the next bill is CP Number 21-07 for first reading. CP Number 21-07, it's a bill for an act to amend section 321 of Title 54 of the Code of the Federated States of Micronesia, as annotated, to establish three corporate income tax rates for different levels of taxable income and for other purposes.
Chairman Figueroa.
Move for the passage of Congress Bill Number 21-07.
It's moved and seconded that Congress pass on first reading CP Number 21-07. Discussion. Any discussion? If none, there is no objection. Chairman Orsman, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Can someone educate me on the need of this, why it wasn't in the original bill or the law that was enacted, and why is it urgent that we don't have hearings on it before we vote on this issue? Very important issue.
Thank you, Chairman Orsman. Short reses, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. For leader, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move to withdraw the following bills: CP 21-15, 21-18, 21-19, and 21-20 to be placed on bill calendar for today for action.
It's moved and seconded that the following bills, 21-15, 21-18, 21-19, and 21-20, be withdrawn from committees and placed on the bill calendar for first reading action. The relevant rules are still suspended. So let's vote those in favor of the motion. Say yes. Aboss, no. Motion carried. Those bills, 21-15, 21-18, 21-19, and 21-20, are withdrawn from committees and placed on the bill calendar for first reading action. First bill, Chief Clerk.
Mr. Speaker, we have CB number 21-15 for first reading. CB number 21-15. It's a bill for an act to further amend Title 11 of the Code of the Federated States of Micronesia as annotated, as amended by amending sections 1141 and 1147 thereof to correct technical errors in the 2014 FSM Code as annotated and for other purposes.
Chairman Romelow.
Move for passage on the first reading.
It's moved and seconded that Congress pass on first reading CB number 21-15. Discussion. Any discussion? There is no discussion?
Speaker.
Debate?
Speaker.
Yes, Chairman Perman. Sorry, I didn't.
Can I be educated on this, exactly what's happening here?
Sure. Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congressman Romelow.
Move for passage on the first reading.
It's moved and seconded that Congress pass on first reading CB number 21-15. Discussion. Any discussion? There is no discussion?
Speaker.
Debate?
Speaker.
Yes, Chairman Perman. Sorry, I didn't.
Can I be educated on this, exactly what's happening here?
Sure. Short recess, subject to call of the chair.
Congress is back in session. We're still discussing the bill 21-15. Questions being called for. If there is no objection, discussion is closed. So let's vote by oral call of members. Chief Clerk.
Senator Aritas. Senator Figuerre. Senator Colent. Floor Leader Harper.
Yes, since I'm not a lawyer, do know anything.
Senator Conman. Vice Speaker Moses. Senator Ned. Senator Perman.
Aye.
Senator Romolo. Senator Orsmao. Senator Wally. Speaker Semina.
Yes.
Mr. Speaker, 11 members voted for.
CB number 21-15 has passed Congress on first reading. Next bill.
Mr. Speaker, we have CB number 21-18 for first reading. CB number 21-18. This is a bill for an act to further amend section 204 of Title II of the Code of the Federated States of Micronesia as amended by public law numbers 19-29, 19-63, and 20-47 to remove the division of personnel from the office of the President and create a separate office of personnel under this section and for other purposes.
Okay. Chairman Romolo.
Move for adoption on the first reading.
It's moved and seconded that Congress pass on first reading CB number 21-18. Discussion.
Speaker, can I be again educated on this?
Of course. Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Back in session. Any further discussion on the bill? If none, if there is no objection...
Speaker, just, I think just the typo or the number two office of national archives, right?
Archives, yes. Those are technicals. They will...
All right. Well, then question.
Okay, so if there is no further discussion, debate is closed. Let's vote by oral call of members. Chief Clerk.
Senator Aritas. Senator Figuerre. Senator Colent. Floor Leader Harper.
No, because as Chairman Willy said, no matter where they are, they will still have plenty of funerals.
Senator Conman. Vice Speaker Moses. Senator Ned. Senator Perman.
Aye.
Senator Romolo. Senator Orsmao. Senator Wally. Speaker Semina. Mr. Speaker, 10 members voted for.
For that reason, CB number 21-18 has passed Congress on first reading. Next bill.
Mr. Speaker, we have CB number 21-19 for first reading. CB number 21-19 is a bill for an act to further amend sections four and five of Public Law Number 20-178 as amended by Public Law Number 21-01 to change the use of funds previously appropriated therein to fund public projects and social programs for the people of Pompeii and other states and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuerre.
Move for the passage of the third bill on first reading.
It's moved and seconded that Congress pass on first reading CB number 21-19. Discussion. Any discussion? Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Floor, can... Congress is back in session. We're still discussing CB 21-19. Any further discussion? If none, there is no objection. Discussion is closed. Let's vote by oral call of members.
Senator Aritas. Senator Figuerre. Senator Colent. Floor Leader Harper. Senator Conman. Vice Speaker Moses. Senator Ned. Senator Perman.
Aye.
Senator Romolo. Senator Orsmao. Senator Wally. Speaker Semina. Mr. Speaker, 11 members voted for.
CB number 21-19 has passed Congress on first reading. Next bill.
Mr. Speaker, we have CB number 21-20 for first reading. CB number 21-20. It's a bill for an act to further amend sections four and six of Public Law Number 20-141 as amended by public laws numbers 20-145, 21-163, 20-164, and 20-190 to change the use and allot the funds previously appropriated therein for the purpose of funding priority infrastructure projects and other projects and programs in the state of Pompeii and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuerre.
Move for the passage on first reading.
It's moved and seconded that Congress pass on first reading CB number 21-20. Discussion. Any discussion? If none, there is no objection. Discussion is closed. So let's vote by oral call of members. Chief Clerk.
Senator Aritas. Senator Figuerre.
Yes.
Senator Colent.
Yes.
Floor Leader Harper. Floor Leader Harper. Senator Conman. Vice Speaker Moses. Senator Ned. Senator Perman.
Aye.
Senator Romolo. Senator Orsmao. Senator Wally. Speaker Semina. Mr. Speaker, 11 members voted for.
CB number 21-20 has passed Congress on first reading. Next bill.
There are none, Mr. Speaker.
Okay. Takes care of the bill calendar, resolution calendar. If none, scroll down to the next item.
Item 20, introduction of bills and resolutions.
If you have any measures to introduce, pass them on to Chief Clerk. Next.
Item 21, miscellaneous communications. There are none, Mr. Speaker.
Next item.
Item 22, miscellaneous business.
Any miscellaneous business? No? Okay. Announcement. Chairman, what is it?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Announcement from your committee on external affairs.
Thank you. Chairman, Chairman Figuerre?
No announcement.
Chairman Perman.
Your committee of health and social affairs is regrouping, so by tomorrow you'll hear announcements. Thank you.
Okay. Chairman Romolo.
Your committee on TNC will continue the public hearing in the states after session on the CONCON bill. So interested members are invited. That will start in Cusai and Yab. Thank you.
Okay. Chairman Collet.
Your committee on TNC will rush, rush the budget hearing tomorrow at 8:30. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman Colent. Take note, members of TNC committee. Okay. Chairman Conman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. There is no announcement from your special committee on climate change and environment.
Thank you. Okay. Chairman Orsmao.
Your committee on education is continuing its recuperating and hibernating.
That's good, because you were sick, very sick last time, so it's good to recuperate. Okay. Vice Speaker Moses, you have any announcement? Senator Aritas.
No announcement, Speaker.
Thank you. Okay, I think Chairman Wally mentioned those two meetings tomorrow. One, President with JCRP, and then with members of Congress, meeting with luncheon, having a luncheon with the President at his office, I understand, during lunchtime. So those are the announcements.
Short recess, Mr. Speaker.
Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Floor Leader, announcement and then...
Move that we stand recess until 10:00 AM tomorrow.
It's moved and seconded that Congress stand in recess until tomorrow at 10:00 in the morning. Those in favor say yes. Abols no. Motion carried. Congress now stands in recess until tomorrow at 10:00 in the morning.
Perman.